Pono Planning Commission, did you get all of that or you want me to, you want me to start over?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, this is our regular meeting Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. The agenda tonight is approval of the August 15th agenda, which is what I just said. Our guest tonight unfortunately was unable to make it, Elaine Hayko from the Vermont Transportation Association. Was going to talk to us tonight about park and ride. We do have some information on it that she had given to Nelson Bronell and Bill Botso, delivered just today to our secretary. So we'll get through as much of it as we can, unfortunately there's a deadline for applying for a grant on that. It really is. And as Julie points out, that stuff is dated June 1st. Number three would be the approval of the regular meeting minutes and we'll probably move that up and go through all these minutes, approval of the special work session minutes. We'll go through the mail and then other business, we'll talk a little bit about the town plan. Julie will give us an update on mailings to other municipalities and the hearings, public hearings. We need to approve the rules procedure, which I thought we did a couple of months ago. We approved them and you were just going to type them up, but we can certainly look at them.
I wanted them to be reviewed before we sent, we have to sign them, we haven't signed them yet.
Oh, we haven't signed them yet, so we'll pass them around and take a look at them. And then any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve was a device though that we move, if there's people here for public comment, then we move them up to first.
Alright, I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So let's take a look at, let's go through these, the regular meeting minutes of July 18th. I think Julie was kind enough to send all these to us, so we should have had a look at them.
Can't you just ask, sorry, can't you just ask to see public comment come first?
I did.
Oh, yeah, but I think you're here more for...
We have nothing to say.
There's the public comment.
We're listening.
Okay.
There's the public comment, I apologize, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't purposely brushing you off there.
You just know what they're here for.
I, yeah, I know what section you're here for, so I, I'm sorry. And feel free, you know, if you do have something to say during that section.
We'll change our minds.
Yeah, okay, it's good to see you here again. Okay, so let's take a look at these July 18th minutes, of which I was absent, so I'll just look at it for clerical errors or not. So when you have a, when everybody thinks they've had enough time, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
We need any further discussion about the July 18th regular minutes?
We're reading, I have another minute.
You bet.
Thank you, that's enough.
So we have a second, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And I abstain as well. Okay, let's take a look at the, our work session of August 2nd.
No, it's a correction, it's August 1st.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
The second was the D R V.
You're mixing those up, are you?
Apparently.
So with that correction, our work meeting was on Tuesday, August 1st. Take a look through.
Changed it everywhere.
I made it under the agenda as August 1st.
Oh, wait a minute, you got August 1st on the second page. Something must have kicked in when you flipped the page. I like it.
Move that to be accepted.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's an aye for me as well. Okay.
Will you sign these please?
I'm sure they'll know that's my signature. Alright, approval of those minutes, approval of those minutes. Why don't we, why don't we cover the mail and other business? And then we'll talk about this park and ride. Fair enough?
Okay, I have a state of Vermont land use permit administrative amendment for Max and Truckin Limited for Northdale. And it's the maintenance shed on Dean Road.
That's the solar thing, isn't it? I think Max and Trucking is the one that's doing the solar.
They did, the solar's already done. The field's already there, everything's up.
It's the same, yeah.
I think they own.
But they had to do a shed, yes, but they had to do a permit for a shed and a permit for something else too. And then I have a V L C T 50th news for August and September, I just got it today. So I hadn't emailed it to you guys yet, but we just got it today.
I got, you can sign up and get a link to this from V L C T, mine came in yesterday.
Okay. Well, I couldn't email yesterday because our server was down, so we didn't have any computer work yesterday. But actually, I'll email it later. Okay. Do you want me to read our email for, that was forwarded to us for the formal complaint?
Sure.
And please submit to select board?
Did you make copies?
Everybody got one.
Everybody has one in their folder.
Oh, that's what you were...
Yeah, we got one.
I'm sorry.
Wow, yeah.
Do you want me to read the letter, or do you want to read the letter?
Oh, I'd be glad to, if you want me to read it. This is from Donna Lozon, was sent to the select board, says I'm writing, I'm writing a formal complaint against Pono...
Before you start, you have to start at the top where it was, per the selectman, eight thirteen meeting.
Begin at the beginning here, per the selectman's eight three seventeen meeting. This is from Linda, the secretary, I was instructed to forward this concern to the planning commission. And this is from Donna Lozon, and she says, "I'm writing a formal complaint against the Pono Planning Commission Vice Chair Sid Smithers, Chairman Michael Slattery, and Member Shannon Barzati. Mr. Smithers' behavior toward a group of concerned Pono residents was completely inappropriate during a recorded Pono Planning Committee meeting on July 18th, 2017. Mr. Smithers can be seen smiling, laughing, smirking, and called the concerns of residents had silly. Shannon Barzati took the liberty of applying for grants and said on six twenty she did so as a private citizen, and later recanted that stating it was a planning commission application. This is a complete misrepresentation and abuse of position. You either apply as a private citizen and state so on the application, or it's done as a committee, following the procedures and record keeping required. Despite her saying she did this as a private citizen, her application and subsequent letters of support indicate otherwise. This includes members of the committee stating that they knew nothing about it." I'm not sure what committee we're talking about there. Mike Slattery stated in response to the concerns regarding this application on six twenty seventeen that members of the committee, so I think we're talking about the planning commission there, committee, "need to follow rules and procedures when applying for grants. He stated that the committee could have done things differently, then remarked that despite not doing so with the climate and economy model, he would do it all again, all on the record. This type of condescending and arrogant behavior has become a regular occurrence among many of the Pono Planning Committee. I would suggest, given these meetings are public and recorded, that the select board address conduct unbecoming of town leaders, sign Donna Lozon." And that was sent Friday, August 4th, 2017. Any comment? Okay. Alright.
I have no email.
No mail? And no, it's not on here anyway, but no Z A log, we only do that once every three or four meetings now, right? Or something like that?
Are you, before we, what am I supposed to do with the letter Bonnie gave me?
Just, I wanted you to give everybody a copy and just keep it in the minutes, that's all.
I didn't give anybody a copy.
Yeah, when you get a chance, because we're not going to discuss it tonight anyway, but...
Are we gonna ever?
I don't know, we might. Under other business, let's talk about the town plan. So you got Julie's email today, look at, you've got a fancy copy, blue on the top.
I don't think it ought to say draft anymore.
Well, I think it technically still is a draft.
Okay.
Until such time as our public hearing is complete and we send it to the legislative body.
I'd call it proposed.
Okay, well, we can talk about that because we...
It won't fit on the page.
We have a window of opportunity after our hearing before it goes to the legislative body to make corrections of grammatical. So Rick, I'll be looking for you to, with a fine tooth comb, to go over all of this.
Oh, boy, are you sure you want?
You gotta read it anyways to find out what's spelled incorrectly. And we'll have an opportunity to call it something different when it goes to the legislative body. So, and then of course they have to have their public hearings as well. September 19th and 20th at seven o'clock at the elementary school are the public hearings, correct?
Yes.
And that's upstairs in the library, downstairs in the gymnasium?
In the gym.
Okay. You think we'll draw that big a crowd, or you're just covering all the bases?
I'm covering my bases.
That's the way.
Anything, I'm covering my bases.
We don't want to spill over into, into the parking lot from the library, so I think that's fine, as long as the school doesn't mind.
Nope, I sent it over to the school.
Who is going to be there that night? Show of hands, please, God willing, the creek doesn't rise, gonna be there, right? Okay. My proofreader's not gonna be there, my lawyer's not gonna be there. Sid and Monday are gonna be, unless they, unless they come back a few days early, they're gonna be in Maine.
Supposed to tell people they're away.
Yeah. Gonna be in Maine, but coming back immediately.
With the cameras on.
And, I'm sorry Sid.
They're unable to attend.
I got it, they're unable to attend. So I wanted, I reached out to Michael Batchard today to make sure he was going to be available and to see if we could even think about changing that, he recommended clearly not to change it. He said first of all Julie has probably spent some budget money on newspapers and things like that. So he has promised to be there, I think where, where he'll, his expertise will come in as to the state mandated parts of the plan. And I think the rest of us are going to do a really good job of reading through that to make sure we understand it inside and out. You know, that's a night to take public comment, it's a night to answer questions for the public, but I don't think it's a night to debate the public. If they don't like what we had to say in the plan, or we don't like what they have to say. So I think we'll just be careful about that and take everything into consideration. Then it's brought back here for potential changes, and then it's sent on to the legislative body.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Is it going to be on CAT TV?
Don't know.
And if not, are you gonna make a recording?
Sorry to interrupt, do you mind sending me the info and we can see about covering it?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. If you need my email address, let me know and I can give that to you.
Julie must have it.
She does, yep.
Well, we're not, are we doing, we're not gonna do our regular meeting that night, we're just gonna go over to the school.
If we do our regular meeting, it should be at the conclusion of the, so if we have a light agenda other than that, because we've done that in the past, we've changed bylaws, we've had it on the night of our regular meeting. Difference was that absolutely no one showed up for the change of those bylaws, and so we have plenty of time.
Given the effort that's gone into this, I think it ought to be on CAT TV if we can do it.
That's fine with me.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
What was the date of that again?
Tuesday, the 19th and Wednesday, the 20th of September, seven o'clock.
I may be hightailing it till last week, so...
Kind of flimsy excuse is that?
I gotta go, even the lawyers go on vacation.
I know, yeah, that's right. You shouldn't say where you're going away.
Jesus, Ronnie.
Anybody wants anything I got, they can go.
They want it that bad, it's theirs, huh?
That's right.
Yeah, I got you.
To the bear traps.
I have a question about the, is there an online version? Because I've already had a few people ask me if they could read the town plan, is that...
I was gonna tell you, if you get to explain in a minute, I will tell you what I did. The town plan is available at Mr. Winchester's, the Pono Deli Market, the town office, and one's going to the library. I have, we don't technically have our website yet to place it on.
Stay tuned.
However, it's been sent to the group, the citizens have been here, they have a copy of it. Fred Miller has a hard copy. Anybody, anybody, and on my letter, when I drafted it and sent it out, they, if they want a copy, they can email and ask for a copy. I have it on the computer, thus I sent it to the banner today, or Jim Therian wanted it to review, and I emailed him. It's already been, or I mailed it to all the abutters on the ninth, it's sent to the banner on the eighth and ninth, or the ninth and tenth. The budding towns, yes. And it's already been printed in the banner. It was printed in on Saturday's paper, so our little ad, I got blocked for two hundred and fifty five dollars for our little ad. I asked how it can...
Condensed.
Very much more, first the twelve hundred that we did the last time.
Magnifying brass to read it.
I know, but at least, and I had attached all the letters to the books at the various places. I had made twenty-five of them up because I had to send out ten of them, so I do have a couple more. But to do twenty-five copies, it was two hundred and thirty-one dollars, and certified mailing was a hundred and fourteen. So thus we had spent six hundred and one dollars and seventy-three cents. So that was my short response to you guys when...
When we were asked.
When you guys had asked.
We haven't asked yet.
So, but I hadn't gotten it back yet from B C R C.
They received it.
Well, I, but I haven't got a certified copy back yet from North Adams, Stanford, and Clarksville. So the other ones I got back, dollar seven, so I had to send it to the housing.
Does it go to the city or town clerk, or does it go to comparable planning board or planning commission?
If they have a planning commission, it goes to them, if they don't, it goes to the clerk.
Cool.
So, as far, I mean, I've been emailing it to people when they say, or I give them a copy if I have a copy, but...
Do we have copies of the proposed or draft plan as it sits in?
Only as our emailed one.
One Mike Batchard's.
But I mean if I...
Yeah.
I mean, I do probably have five more books in the car. I did give one to Henry so that he could read while he was...
Reading.
Yes, that way if he had any questions or anything that...
I'm sure that'll speed his recovery, since digging into the town plan.
Will we be seeing Mike Batchard again before this becomes, I know he wanted to attend the last meeting and couldn't.
No, we won't.
What's your main is that to this?
We won't, we won't see him, and I think since September 19th will be our regular meeting, I don't think that we need to have a work session on the beginning of September, do we? That would be the 12th, the 5th, September 5th. Opinions, anybody?
What would we work on?
Well, you're right, I mean, we're kind of in a cooling off period.
We gotta approve the minutes from tonight's meeting, I guess.
Okay, thanks, we can do that.
And we could start our village designation application.
Designation.
We need to start doing that after.
Destination too.
Yes, a designation, right, we have that to work on, so everything will fall in place. So we can get going and stuff.
Well, then the question I guess remains, do we continue to have work sessions even though the plan is...
Yeah, no, good point, Rick. I have a, an opinion on that, I think until the, the plan passes, it becomes our town plan, which then necessitates the changing of bylaws and implementation of everything in that table, I say that we're fine without it. Anybody else? Yeah? Right? I mean, something could come up, there could be some emergency that we have to occasionally meet for, but I think, how much time do you need to warn a meeting, seven days from the, from the date if we have to squeeze one in there? Five, technically, yeah. So if it's, I don't, do we have to vote on that, Julie, if we're gonna...
Yes, it's in our town plan, that we meet, we do work ses, or not, the book that we send, town report.
The town report, okay, then, then until the conclusion of the town plan approval process, I would look for a motion to suspend the, the work sessions, the regular work sessions on the first Tuesday of each month.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. That one's usually unanimous, isn't it? Eliminate a meeting. There's not a lot of, no, I want to be here.
You're pretty optimistic that it's gonna pass, I had to say.
We may never have another work meeting again? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a betting man, but...
Go to the cemetery, or bet tomorrow.
Probably have better luck, yeah, I probably have better luck. I'm looking for, Julie, were we supposed to send it to somebody in the state, or did you say that and I just missed it? B C R C, surrounding municipalities.
Send it to the Department of Housing.
That's it.
I already got their response card back.
Good, excellent, excellent. Alright.
And are you talking about the application to the...
This draft has to go to surrounding municipalities, has to go to the Department of Housing Chair, which you already got that back, and then B C R C. And then you enter a period of, you know, thirty days, they have it to review it, comment on it, and then your, your hearings would be at the conclusion of that process. And I guess it's from the time you actually mailed them out was when the clock started, Jewel, when you think, yeah. So that gives them plenty of time to, if anything we're doing here impacts them, they can respond in kind. So, okay. Any further discussion on the town plan hearing process? If none, let's move on and let's go over, take a quick look at the rules of procedure. These were rewritten with a couple of changes, I forgot exactly what the changes are, Julie. They weren't drastic, I don't think.
No, they had to take correct maternity. We added the work sessions, when necessary, work sessions are held the first Tuesday, meeting voices vary. We deleted a little, and then that was pretty much all for changes.
Yeah, it hasn't really changed much from that. Maternity and paternity leave, is that what you added, paternity, or both?
I had materials. Material leave.
Material leave. I always mix those two up.
I went and had to correct personal.
I look for a motion to approve these, these rules of procedure.
So moved.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye. I'll, I'll sign whatever one Julie wants me to sign.
She wants us all to say.
We all do.
Yeah, I was just gonna get the ball rolling.
Need a pen?
No, I don't, thanks. Hey, you're on there. I wouldn't sign anything without my attorney present if I were you.
He's over there.
Oh.
He's already signed it.
Licensed up here, didn't you say that?
Until they're considering I don't have fingernails.
I hope so.
Oh, yes. She's gonna have to do that.
I didn't know you had a license.
They're sanctioned, so I said, okay.
Practice law? Practice law? There is a fine line in there somewhere, but what do you think? What you can and can't say. Alright, as that goes around, let's, let's talk about, let's talk a little bit about park and ride. Is everybody familiar with the state's park and ride program? Mostly originated with the state, I think, at the state level. Elaine was gonna talk much more eloquently than I will ever be able to talk about it tonight, but unfortunately she couldn't be here, as I said at the opening of the meeting. She had a meeting several weeks ago now with Nelson and Bill Botso, where they took a tour of Pono, looked at some different parcels of land, and she said that there, there's great opportunity for a park and ride and a great call for it at the same time. That people traveling both north and south to work could benefit by riding together, reducing everything from carbon emissions to fossil fuel consumption, and probably have a lot more fun than driving themselves to work. I don't know, but I think that's the basis of this whole thing, right?
Does it include a bus stop too? I think there's something about the bus making stop and...
I just looked at this when I came in and I, you know, I would like to get her back here to talk to us in detail. The, the problem that we're facing is that there is a deadline on a grant application to get funding to begin this process. And my understanding of that process is to identify land that this may be suitable for, and then beyond that, I don't know anything about it. I don't know if the state steps in and there's additional matching money to, you know, to carve out an area and pave it and put in parking places, and I, I know that there, I think there are charging stations for electric cars in some of the, I know there are in some of the ones that I've seen. So I'm just gonna open the floor here to any comment on this. I, I think it, first of all, it is a, a big part of this town plan that, as Ronnie points out, hasn't passed yet. But it's all, it's part of the energy section, and part of the energy section is mandated by the state. And we really have no choice, if we want an approved plan, that we have to kind of acquiesce to, to the state on some of those things. And, and some of them, I believe, they're, they're talking about park and ride, they're talking about charging stations. So, comments?
I'm very concerned about that. Because electric cars are very expensive to start with. If I was gonna spend four... If I was gonna spend forty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars for an electric car, it'd be a big deal. I can plug it in somewhere. Now, if there's a power shortage, they're gonna suck the juice out of my battery. I'm not concerned with that. I don't like big government. I think that's the wrong way to go. Same with the park and ride. I don't know, maybe there's somebody in here that would like to, you know, go to a spot and ride. But, I don't, I don't believe it. I don't know who would. We all got our own cars, we all, and we don't travel that far. I mean, maybe so many people in here go ways. I go down to Georgia and I go to Alaska, but it's only once a year. And that's when I, that's when I'd like a park and ride. That'd be good.
Going to a ballgame in Boston, you know where you're parking. Park and fly. Well, I think it's more.
I don't wanna fly. But all I'm saying is this, I don't think, I don't believe in, in big government telling me. In this thing about fossil fuel, I gotta, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that right out here now. I'm all for fossil fuel.
I heard you say that at the select board meeting.
There's a lot of it. There's a lot of it around. We found a whole big supply under Nevada now. Enough for, I don't know how many hundreds of years, but there's.
I didn't hear about that.
There's millions of, and you know what? I like fossil fuel. I like going in and turning up the thermostat. That's fine with me. And I don't mind, and I don't want, I don't want people telling me if I, you know, if I wanted seventy-five in my house, I'll keep it seventy-five. I don't want the state telling me you gotta keep it at sixty-eight. That's what I don't like. I don't like government interference in my life, or they tell me I gotta have a car that gets thirty-some odd gallon, miles to the gallon or something. I got a ten mile a gallon truck. It serves me very nice. It can carry stuff, and it's got a lot of power. That's what I like. And you know what? And I'm willing to pay that. I'm willing to pay that. And I, and I obey, I obey the laws, I obey the rules. It's got a catalytic converter on it, it's all this other stuff. I am for freedom of people, not being run by the state. As far as I'm concerned, we had the last governor we had, he passed all this stuff, and according to him, there would be, there'd only be about twelve houses in, in the state of Vermont that would be burning fossil fuel by twenty-fifty. It don't matter to me, cause I'll be decomposing like Arthur Piller, but still in all.
Adding to the fossil fuel.
I don't think that's right. I don't think people should say, well, look, I don't care if a guy burns wood. I don't care if a guy, if they wanna burn electricity, I don't care. But I'll tell you what, I worked for the largest company in the world for a long time, and they were in the electricity industry. The General Electric. And you had electricity growth at six percent a year for many, many years. Then all of a sudden, they said, oh, we don't want that. What happened?
What do you mean growth?
Industry, that's right. Six percent, no, six percent growth.
The industry was growing at six percent.
A year. We built transformers down there in Schenectady, they built generators and things like that. All that stuff, turbines. All that stuff we were growing. And people didn't care how much you used. At one time in my life, they promoted, here. The more electricity you use, the cheaper it is.
All electric homes.
See? Now what do you got?
Right.
We're going the other direction. I'm not so sure we're going the right way. But that, that's my, that's my spiel, and I, I just don't, I just don't, I'm, I'm sure I'm not gonna use the park and ride. I'd rather go with Rick, ride a bicycle before I go park and ride.
If you park your car, we can ride on the bike together.
Not in this.
That's right.
Not in this fifty, not in this fifty-three Buick.
So, so listen, I, I don't know if charging stations are necessarily part of it. That was more.
According to, to our, our guy to help write this plan, he says that's the reason for that.
No, I meant for tonight's discussion about park and ride.
It is, because you talked electric cars. And when you talk electric cars, if I'm gonna spend fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars for an electric car.
Ronnie, nobody's asking you to.
No.
That's right, nobody is.
No one's asking you to.
You're absolutely right Sid, but I don't want anybody sucking the juice out of my battery, and I don't want anything for nothing. Maybe some people do, but I don't want stuff for nothing. I'll, I'll pay my way.
I, I know you're tying this to park and ride, but I will tell you, I travel around the state frequently. There are huge park and ride, parking lots that are full, and the state is looking for more land to put more of them in because people are taking advantage. Especially when they go to a common employer. So if they're all going down to Williams College, if they're going down to somewhere in Pittsfield, you know, the Bercher Medical Center. That's when people, Ronnie, are interested in, in riding together and saving some money in their pocket on their gas bills. Not just to drive around town, you know, and not burn that much where they get ten or twelve miles to a gallon, or you're riding a car that gets thirty miles to a gallon. That's what the state is promoting more.
State promoted the bus thing too. And you can jump on a bus for a buck, and you can ride quite a ways for a dollar. That isn't promoting anything or anything good. Well, maybe you should.
It's that painful review.
That's a fact.
But. Oh, green on express.
It's all subsidized by me.
Oh, yeah.
Well, not totally by me.
Well.
I'm sure, I'm sure Sid's pitching in.
You think we're all kicking in a little?
You probably are too.
Probably.
See? But I'm not so sure I want that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
For that. Any, no, absolutely.
I, I always get, check out, I'm driving to Bennington and seeing that call wait hun, eight-hundred number just before you get to the turnoff to the hospital for carpooling. Has anybody ever called that number, I wonder? It's been there since.
Oh, I don't know.
Since the oil embargo. Someday I just thought I'd just call that number and see what the hell.
Now that you mention it, I, I think I can picture that. It's been there forever.
Before the apple barn.
Mike, what, we don't know what this grant is for?
Well, I don't. I mean, we just got, you know, Nelson today just dropped this stuff off. Elaine is not here to talk about it. I, I'm all for tabling this until she can come and talk to us. Unfortunately, we'll go past the grant date. Unless somebody else here wants to make a motion that we apply for the grant, we have the money.
Not without knowing what it's for and about.
Well, that's right.
Well, is it the decision of the planning commission, or is it the select board that would decide?
It would be the select boards.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, that'd be something, do we send it off to the select board? I'd say we pass on it. And if Elaine, when this emergency is rectified, she can go back directly to. And she'll see the public comment about, you know, what certain members of the, the planning commission feel, anyway, but, yeah, I, I'm. Yeah, I'm not gonna submit the planning commission to this.
You have to do that.
It'd be good to know more about it.
I personally am all for it, hundred percent.
Is it ultimately up to the select board?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
So if, if we pass it, if we say, no, we're not interested at this time, cause we don't have enough information, which I guess we don't have enough information, however, if we do that and we do the reverse and say, yeah, it sounds like a good idea, but we don't have the jurisdiction to pass it, let it go to the select board. By that time, maybe she would be in better health to be able to explain it to the select board.
I don't think her health's the question, but I know what you mean. She'd be in a better position.
You guys, the only thing I have a thing with, again, I mean, obviously this application is June first. We're just, and it's due prior to August.
The cover, the cover letter is dated June first.
Right, and it tells you that you have to submit by August thirty-first.
I don't believe that's when she was down here with those guys, no Julie.
But, that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna apply for grants and stuff, I'd like to think that we're getting it two weeks prior, like it happened with the last one.
Yeah.
Obviously, this has been in process for a while to have this letter.
I will tell you.
So, I'm, I better make the suggestion when I see Nelson that if he gets anything, and it's the planning commission that is supposed to seek for grants and stuff, then we get the information in a timely manner.
I agree.
Not two weeks prior, once again.
I agree. Now, to, to Nelson's defense there, he reached, he, after the conclusion of his meeting with Elaine, had her reach out to me, which she did to ask to be on the agenda for the work session. So it would've been two weeks earlier. I recommended that, since that was a work session, work to be done, approve the draft of the town plan. And also knowing that there was more than likely gonna be some public comment that night. I gave her the option of coming in and putting her under other business. When I explained that to her, she said, you can still get this done in two weeks, so I'd prefer to come to your regular meeting, so.
Did you understand?
So it would've been a month.
Like in the application, it's a two-page application for a scoring sheet, but it doesn't say that, do we have to match anything? That, that application doesn't say any of that.
Well, we could find that out easily enough.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just looking at it. It gives you a two-page application to score, but it doesn't tell you anything.
This is not rocket science.
Well, the, the little bit that I heard about it was that.
Pretty simple.
It is a select board decision. I think it just came to the planning commission.
Well, Nelson thought she should run it by us because we're doing our town plan.
And we also have visitors here who might have something to say about it as well, Doug and Amy. You know, I was hoping that Elaine could tell us more about it, but. You know, they've sat through our, all of our important business on the planning commission. It'd be good to hear some, hear their thoughts on this.
Gotta be killing them.
I know, but.
Well, I guess the first question I had, the scale of this thing, I mean, you know, the, what, what I heard is that there is a opportunity and, and a call for it in terms of the need. I mean, are we, we looking at the need for the town be ten cars or a hundred cars?
Well, there's different levels of, in the grant application where you have to identify on a, or, on given estimate as to what you think is gonna be appropriate.
Minimum is ten cars.
Yeah.
There you are. Proposed lot size, ten to twenty, twenty to, twenty-one to thirty, and greater than thirty.
Right.
But we aren't traffic, sufficient traffic engineers to know what the likely.
We are not.
Requirements of this community are.
That takes an interview of the public to see who would even be interested in something like that.
We can start with a survey, couldn't we?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, where are they going? What times do they go there?
What time do I have to go? What time do I gotta see my probation officer?
Well, I think Elaine has done some of that, like work. I think she knows that this is an area that could easily sustain.
In particular to our town and which, you know, how many people are going in which direction and all.
Select board meeting.
But people aren't all going the same place.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
This week, next week is wastewater.
If you wanna go to Manchester five, you're going to Raleigh. You're going to Brattleboro. It's a different park and ride.
Yeah, those aren't the people that would ride together.
I don't think.
Well, who would?
They'd ride if they go to common employers, the bigger employers in the area.
Well, where's the big employers?
Well.
They're in New York State or somewhere, Massachusetts. You're not gonna get them in Vermont.
I know, I know of minimum of fifteen people that, that work down at Bercher Medical Center.
That's Bercher Medical. You gotta go to Massachusetts or New York. You can't get a job, you know, people going here.
Southwestern Vermont Medical. Wait, wait, we just, it's for our residents to park and ride together.
Get real. Well, yeah, all them people, they got nice cars out there. They're not gonna jump in with a bunch of other people. It's like riding the subway.
Ronnie, what I recommend is we listen to Elaine on this. She has the stats on it.
Well, I recommend that we also use our own heads and think about it a little bit.
After we get some more facts on it.
That's fine, to get some facts, but you don't have any facts. If you had some facts and said, look, it's going to Pittsfield.
I just said, we'll have Elaine present those facts.
That's good.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other discussion on park and ride? Cause after this, we're gonna talk about park and fly. Just kidding.
I don't think any actions required by the.
I don't think any, any more actions required on it.
That's right. Nothing's been presented that.
Any more public comment before we, I entertain a motion to wrap up here? Stay tuned on this one. Don't, you know, I know you keep hearing that from me, but, yeah.
Seems like things are moving through on the plan. Well, that was the last time we were here, it was.
We'll, we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, it just took two months to do the whole plan. Was that the last time you were here? It was like, that was.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy. That was pretty good.
I'm being decisive, yeah. All right, any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
If none, no other business, I'll accept a motion to adjourn in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.